The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Special White Pine County Commission and Road Commission Meeting, August 5th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman. I'm ready. Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, August 5th, Special County Commission Meeting. Would you all please stand and join us in the celebration? And, uh, my question I'd like to state.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is normal, we will take this first moment to, uh, meditate, pray, or whatever. So the first moment of every meeting is open that way, so we'll go into that for the first Okay, uh, the first, uh, I'll have a mask on when I'm talking. I can't, I pull it down because I can't muffle through, so, uh, I'll wear it when I'm not speaking, but when I'm speaking, I, I need to wear it, so please bear with me. Uh, the first item we have on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment for it to ask on the phone? Is there any on the phone, Mike? No, sir. Seeing none, is anyone in the audience who wants a public comment before we get into today's meeting? Anyone? If not, George, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, the Regional Planning Commission meeting held on July 15, 2020. The Planning Commission approved an application to split a one-acre parcel from a 3.8-acre parcel, so the applicant could drill a well and build a home. This is contrary to longstanding, established precedent that the smallest parcel that can be subdivided is two and a half acres. That hasn't changed by you folks. Countless people were turned down in the past and impeding growth. That's unfair. I'm a nod against the applicant if they can hook up onto sewer, city sewer and water service, which has been an established requirement. And NRS states that it is a requirement if the property line is within 400 feet of service. There's, there's too much selective enforcement and discrimination. Only elected officials should be, should be changing their required loss size, not some carpetbaggers that you pointed that have failed to study the established rules and regulations. The commission needs to address this matter. It's unfair. Mr. Chairman, at the Regional Planning Commission meeting held on July 50, 2020, I express, um, in, I express them inequities. Under Agenda Item B, C, and D, the requirements for home occupation are the same for the city and the county applicants. However, some have been charged 25 for the application, others were charged 75. Some have provided their stated divided business license, others did not. No one showed proof of, excuse me, no one showed, uh, proof of legal ownership or rent permission from the legal owner to allow business. One was denied a city license without first going before the Regional Planning Commission and then the city. How can they consider any items without having all the required information, Mr. Chairman? They're selectively enforcing the law under colored law. Why the discrimination? You need to look into that.
Those are city issues, George. I think you should look into that.
Regional planning. You've got people on there, they're just as, uh, operating improperly as the others.
But the items you're talking about.
They're knowledgeable man. Who knows what I'm talking about?
Thank you.
I'm asking for some consideration here. Mr. Chairman, at the County Commission meeting held July 22nd, I inquired about your Agenda Item 2C-4B. I asked if the commission took notice of the requirements, the federal government mandates for COVID grants for any other federally assisted or funded project. In particular, if you took notice and intended to comply with Article 5, the Age Discrimination Act of 1975, Article 6, the Americans with Disability Act of 1990, and Article 8, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI. I did not get an answer. I've brought numerous concerns to the commission over the years at your meetings and have submitted some in writing. I need an answer. Your response is poor at best. Mr. Chairman, um... I've asked about the, uh, fire chief having the, uh, chance to look at the ingress, egress on Avenue D. I've not heard anything. You need to address that safety item. If we have winter and there's better than six inches of snow that covers that island, you're gonna have a bad accident. That road's way too narrow. No one's addressed that. You have a planning commission. You set down rules. Again, no one's addressing that.
You have three minutes left, George.
I'll be back, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment in, in the building or on the phone? Anyone? None on the phone, right, Mike? And none in the audience, so seeing none, hearing none, we're gonna proceed with the meeting. We're gonna go to page two, Item 1, is discussion for possible action. Approval to adopt Revolution 2020-48 pursuant to NRS 405.010 to immediately order the closure of that section of County Road 1177 from its inception at Highway 50, continuing south until its intersection with County Road 1204 and County Road 1204 to 3, to prevent further catastrophic environmental and infrastructure damage to that section of roadway due to the dry condition and heavy machinery traffic, as well as provide notice to the public of the closure, penalties, fines, and the potential liability for defiance of this order, and to direct the County Road Department to place barriers, signage, and copies of this order and resolution at access points to this section of the county road. Uh, Mike, do you wanna speak to this, please?
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, at the last meeting, we discussed entry into a road agreement, a maintenance agreement with Western Gold, Western Oil, and Enjex, um, to assure that the road will be maintained and restored during the course of the project to prevent further harm and also after the project is completed. Um, I have that signed agreement right here. The, um, Western Oil and Western Gold, in their respective leadership, have signed the agreement, and so it is not on the agenda today to sign this, but this is what we're looking for, so we can get the chairman to sign this and we can ratify it at the next meeting. Okay? Um, Enjex, the, the equipment operator on site has refused to sign the agreement, and so I'm gonna have to do some investigation on that. They'd like to sign it under a different company name. Um, I need to find out who are the partners are and why, um, Enjex is refusing to do that, and I think that's something Western Gold and Western Oil have to take over with Enjex as well, because Enjex actually is an owner in these companies. So it's kinda complicated. We're trying, they're kinda doing the best they can to keep this going and prevent further harm. James Franklin is present today. He's a, I believe, if I get this right, he's a manager of Western Oil and an owner of Western Gold.
Yes, sir.
Nailed it. Okay. So, uh, I do have a presentation. I took a ride out to the road yesterday with Commissioner Goedau and Bill Collerwood, and those videos we played in a second, they're just some snippets we took from our cell phone so you can understand why we're so fired up. Um, and there's some pictures on that video as well for the public to see and ask some questions. So the reason why I'm talking about this right now is this commission, this board, still has the opportunity on this agenda to close those roads down, which would effectively, um, stall the project. The BLM is also watching closely to make sure, um, their permits are contingent, that they follow all local laws and regulations as well, so we're trying to work that out with them. This is a first draft of this agreement. We have some other agreements we have to enter into with them over the course of the next few weeks. We're gonna try to do some, partner with them to do some permitting for some water and gravel, because it's the only way to address, uh, what's happened out there, unfortunately. Um, alright, with that said, we'll play some videos. You can, you can ask some questions. That's a three-car ton or one-ton pickup, and that is the bug dust pile beside about knee height to thigh height, about 15 to 20 feet wide and about, almost a quarter mile. That didn't play very clear enough. You can try again, see if it looks better. Well, that was once, uh, that's a minor county road. We don't receive any fuel tax for that, right? But it also has been unmaintained for, and usable in the same condition for 20-something years, at least. Our lease with BLM for that right-ofway expires in 2023, which is an interesting part of the puzzle, because we just own that right-ofway. And so as far as you can see down there, and that's eight miles from the highway, uh, to the drill pad, is that 1177 we're talking about. You can see there, the bug dust is piled up above the window well, and the truck is in four-wheel drive. If you take it out of four-wheel drive, you get stuck, apparently. And James Franklin knew I was gonna show this video. He, they understand there's a problem out there as well. They're not trying to hide it from us, so, go ahead. Uh, this is where we got stuck. I was in the, uh, vehicle in the back there with Doug Gootree, and that is, uh, Bill Collerwood trying to pull us out there. It didn't work at first. We were high center.
We'll get more momentum next time.
That was a good time. Nope. I thought you did that. This is another vehicle coming down the road. You can see the bug dust and how, this is why the BLM is concerned, because it's not just on our right-ofway, but that, that, which is their soil, is up in the air and being, uh, dispersed like marisol across their, you know, their properties. And that's, uh, that's not good for sage grouse.
Good for any.
I mean, it's crazy, because, you know, the BLM get all fired up about someone moving a water trough or something, or a culvert, and, uh, out there, we got several miles of this destruction. So we're all trying to partner together now to try to see what we can do creatively to solve the solution, solve, solve the problem. Oh, this is my favorite. Uh, that's your district attorney digging the truck out.
Always good to see you working for him.
Yeah, I do know how to work, believe it or not, with my hands. So, we eventually got the truck out, and, uh, we toured 1204 as well. 1204 is a cut-off road, and it also has, um, it's starting to show some damage as well.
Try it.
Yeah. Um, and what the commission needs to know is in this valley, they have gravel in one spot, potential water source in another, uh, and so the other roads surrounding their project are also being impacted. And, so White Pine, um, 1177 and 1204 are the, are the roads that are most impacted now. The, the 1177 from the drill pad south to 1204 is probably worse than the first eight miles from the highway to the drill pad. That's where we were stuck, actually. And, um, so we have concerns about that, but what really causes me some concern right now also is White Pine 5, the only other artery into that valley, that only other path, that's our fuel tax road. That one, we do receive fuel tax for, we do maintain, and it is, uh, it's starting to show big patches of bug dust is starting to get trampled as well, because they're using that road to access gravel. They have a piece of private property over there, that they are either gonna park some equipments or some rigs there, and, uh, they may get some water over there as well. So that's kinda in a nutshell. There's some pictures on there too, I think, Mike, on the disc. Alright, that's mine. So, any questions about the condition of the roads out there right now, or kinda what the problem is? Okay? We met with Western Gold and Western Oil yesterday, Ms. Carson, Travis and I, and Bill, and Brian, and we, we had the other one on the phone, we had Jared on the phone, and we're trying to come up with a solution. The only, you know, there's gotta be a solution, and the solution that we can find is to get, um, have Western Gold prepare the applications on behalf of White Pine County for a couple of temporary gravel pits and a couple of temporary lease areas where we can apply for some water rights. They would, of course, pay for the infrastructure to get the wells drilled and all that stuff. So, uh, maybe locate two along 1177 and maybe one on 12, um, White Pine 5, something on that side of the valley as well, because if you're gonna be accessing property over there, there's gonna be some need for maintenance over there as well that we can partner with the road department. Um, that process, if we're lucky, um, will take 30 to 45 days at, at the quickest, and the big problem looming now is our monsoons season, monsoon, is just around the corner, and we have several thousand tons of bug dust on that road, and they know it. That'll also shut the project down if they have a swamp out there they can't get to. And so we're just trying, they're gonna try to keep it open the best they can, um, do the best maintenance they can with this few amount, the few trucks of water and gravel they have to keep the road open, um, until we can get those, uh, permits granted to us from BLM, and then they're going to repair the road. That's kinda, and this agreement doesn't lay it out in detail quite like that, but we're gonna have to put another agreement together that talks about that process. This just talks about the bonding, and they're working on the bonding, um, they're acknowledging their role in, uh, the use of those road, roads and, and the damages being caused out there. And the only residual issue now is bringing Enjex to the table as an owner in the company as well, because they're a partner in Western Oil, Western Gold as well. And, uh, they don't wanna sign this agreement, because they feel they have a contract and it's their responsibility, but that's, that's between those guys. You know, whoever's operating machinery out there, that's who we want, that's who owes a duty to us and the law. Any questions?
Well, what, uh, what do we do in the meantime? Do we just let them continue on the road and keep destroying it, or do we, uh, do we close that road until they can actually go out there, repair, or get, get some semblance where they can get to and from the project? Because if we continue to let them operate on that road in this condition, it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse, and then we'll really give a creek.
We're gonna try to split the bait. What we're doing is we're gonna allow them to keep, I recommend allowing them to keep it open. We keep the road open so they can finish drilling the one spot they have now, and then they're going to rest the rig while they repair the road. The timeframes line up just about right, and then they have two more permits on that pad to drill, so they have the investment there, they have to get it finished. Um, is that what you understand as well, Travis?
Yeah, and, and I, uh, reached out to the owner of Aztec Drilling last night, and he confirmed that as well, that, uh, just what James had told us, that there was two more wells planned that he had been informed on, and he would definitely be in favor of having the road fixed, because he informed me, he moved two engines moving his rig in, so he, he would be on board with whatever we had to work timeframe-wise.
It's obviously in the best interest of Western Oil, Western Gold, to have those roads in good repair, because they're investors, you know, will wanna see the site, they'll wanna know that their vendors can get to that site. So, um, if they can let, finish with their manpower they have now, get that thing drilled, lay the rig down, send their people home in the month it takes us to fix the roads out there. I mean, this is all best-case scenario. I mean, there's a lot of if still. They found that, uh, Western Oil has a, a lead on some material that they use in other parts of the west on bug dust to stabilize the roads, they're gonna look at trying to get some of that up here in the meantime.
Patch, patches through, yeah.
Yeah, they just kinda put a band-aid on it for now, and then, if Enjex doesn't come to the table, or if we feel that we're being deceived, or it's not what we think it's gonna be, we can, I mean, the problem is that road, it, I mean, it's absent a huge earth-moving project out there for much, bringing some gravel and water, um, and we have the unique ability to work with BLM to get it. Uh, it's not gonna get repaired. The BLM said it doesn't matter whether it was Western Oil or the, or the county who applies those temporary rights, but the one benefit may be that we, if we do it in our name, we would have agreement with, uh, Western Oil, we can also use it on our roads out there for the time being, to maintain some stuff. The long-term permits, like the 10-year permits, is, I mean, that'd be ideal, but they take, I believe, longer to get. Um, as Martin told me yesterday, he said, "This is crazy." You know, we, we're still trying to get re-permitted for a gravel pit we already have since 2012, so how are we supposed to, you know, have faith that we can get this pushed through?" And the only thing I can do is maybe appeal to the BLM and go and visit them personally and say, "Look, your best, if you really care about the environment and the species down there, at this point, unfortunately, forever, however we got here, your best thing you can do is help push this through as quick as possible so we can mitigate the continual damage." Because even if everyone left right now, and they went home, and they lost their millions, and we have a destroyed road out there, the, having that much just loose dust packed up and destroyed, it's just gonna blow all over, and it's gonna triple and quadruple in size out there on their own with wind and mud and rain and monsoons. So, it's in everyone's best interest, all partners, BLM, county, public, and Enjex to, or, you know, them to, Western Oil to, to try to come together in a creative way to solve this problem. Because everyone needs to know, we are, we are friendly with, um, economic development and oil and gas and mining, but this kinda blew up. I don't think they were expecting that, obviously, they've said that. We weren't, we didn't really even know what was happening until it was done, and we gotta figure out a way, how to get ahead of this. I read through all of the BLMs on the permitting, the decision record, the, um, finding no significant impact, and the, uh, the EA, all 140 pages of it. And what's really interesting, I think even BLM missed the vote on this one. When they permitted the project, they, I mean, the idea is that they can have a finding no significant impact means they missed it, and, uh, this is supposed, what's supposed to inform the public, inform the county on what the risks are, and this wasn't, I mean, that road was not, the, what happened on that road really wasn't contemplated in any of this, so, um, that's the presentation, so it's my recommendation that you can discuss these facts, ask names to come up and talk to you a little bit, uh, and figure out whether you wanna go forward, close the road now and just saying, "Alright, we have the damage, and we're just gonna take care of ourselves and try to prevent more damage," or if we wanna try to thread the needle and make this all work out. We also have the second item, which is the letter to BLM to inform them of some of the, uh, some of the conditions in the EA and the decision record that aren't being met, being the impact to the county and local laws and ordinances. Um, you can also table that as well, they are aware of those things. In fact, that's, they are temporarily paused by the BLM right now out there because of their non-compliant with county ordinances and, uh, our issues. So, we give them through this meeting, and not closing down, that'll be the first step to getting them up and running out there with the BLM as well. They have some other things to work on with the BLM, but that's for them.
How do we inform the public? Because my, my, my question is hunting season is right around the corner. A lot of people go use those roads, you know, out in there for sage grouse hunting or whatever, it's right around the corner within the 45 days or whatever, best-case scenario. We can't leave that road open, uh, I don't know whether we can and we can't, without really notifying the public of the dangers to go on that road and get stuck, or whatever they get, driving your own risk, or whatever we're talking about. I mean, is hunting season pretty close, right around the corner?
The road department has signage out there informing the public to travel their own risk if the road flows, and, and they, and the public will very likely get stuck in some of those spots. I mean, that's pretty, pretty bad, but, um, I don't think they can still access that valley from the White Pine 5 side, you know, on 1204 still a little bit. But, you know, that's just that, that, it's that 12, almost 12-mile stretch from the highway down to 1204 that we're talking about. There's some other, uh, BLM two-track roads in there. Maybe you can access it from the 1204 and get back in there somehow, but...
I always had a question for James, maybe he could highlight if Enjex, or just from what Mike said, it sounded like the guy out here wouldn't wanna sign it. Is that true all the way up the food chain at Enjex? Or if you could just kinda tell us where your conversations with them are?
Sure, um, yeah, good, uh, morning, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, Enjex has an entity that's an investment firm that invested into the project, and they're called Enjex, Enjex Oil and Gas LLC, they're not LLC. Um, you know, my, my position is anti-Enjex, you know, the contractor, they said, "Listen, as contractors, why would they be more responsible than rig, than, you know, the water company, than anybody else in the project?" So I understand that. I think basically, they've agreed to put their investment entity into it, who is the partner in the project, uh, to be part of the agreement. I think they were, they're objecting to their contracting firm being, um, on the agreement. So I think that's to clarify what discussions I had this morning, and the discussion I had yesterday. We are working emotionally on the road to continue to, you know, try to play it. We've got some, uh, new technology that has been used by BLM and by the counties in California on roads. We have ordered some of that, we're gonna do a half-mile test of that. It has, um, been recommended that this is something to mitigate temporarily the, the issue for 18 months. What we hope to do is to get, um, enough of that on the road that it can maintain integrity through monsoon, and then when the rig pulls out, we can begin to continue to rebuild that road for the project.
And Mike, uh, what's your take on the Enjex? If the best term was on it versus the contractor?
Well, with the contract as a real, anytime you undertake any project, anytime you go out of this room and do anything in life, any overt act, you're liable for your actions. You can't sign away your liability, really. And as far as I'm concerned, Enjex is always, and always will be liable for any damage they do, whether as a subcontractor or the investment firm. This agreement was supposed to agree to the table to help them, have them acknowledge that, and then they would have an indemnification clause with Western Oil saying, "Look, if we get sued by the county because we screwed up their road royally, or if things go bankrupt, or we can't finish it, or we..." Whatever happens, Western Oil would then back them up and cover their liability. That's the way it's supposed to work. You know, as far as I'm concerned, if you have a major contractor on our roads, I don't care what the, what relationship they have with anyone else, they're liable to us, or BLM, really. But, you know, I, I mean, I really have to see how it's formed and who this investment firm is, and, I mean, there's a lot of this going on where there's, there's several companies here, you know, diversified in different missions and different investments, and they're all kinda tied together in this common goal. Um, I don't know, it's, it's discouraging to think that they can be immune from liability just because they have a contract with Western Oil. Western Oil understands that.
And we will do everything in our power to ensure that they comply with this, this agreement. I can assure you of that.
Probably, what I'd like to see is, you know, if Western Oil reached, sat down with Enjex, and they're almost one, almost one company, because they're all invested, you know, Enjex has invested with Western Oil, Western Gold, I think, and said, "Look, we'll give you an indemnification contract that will back you up on this project." But, I mean, kinda, I don't know, you're gonna have to think about it. When we do these road agreements with the mines, you know, those mines, or JCR or whatever, and they sign the road agreements, right? And they're the ones that sign our agreements.
Yeah.
So, I don't, it doesn't escape their liability, it's just, it, this makes it, maybe we need a different kind of agreement with Enjex, where we just talk, you know, maybe they're not quite fit the bond, but they are the ones saying we're responsible for the roadworks and be carried out in a manner that's, to current standards. They've been in here almost every time, today's the first time, and they're not in here. So, I got concerns. I don't know if they went home for a while, they got your pause, I don't know.
Do we have a, a timeframe, as far as everybody's signatures?
Uh, no, I mean, the fact that Western Oil, Western Gold, and there's two different signatures on here, is that Larry Neurst did?
Yes, sir.
So we have, they're pretty much the CEOs of those two companies, because there's two different projects going on out there. Um, and then we can sign it, we, that's probably enough to, for me to make my recommendation not to close it today, because it's what we asked them for, and they got it to us.
Right. What, what road will be used, and then what is the timeframe until you figure that you're done so that you can rehab the road? I don't know what we're talking about.
Um, we estimate that, um, today we have an inspection, and with the BLM, if the BLM, um, agrees with our inspection and allows us to drill, we have approximately five days. we have approximately five days of, of drilling and about two days of curing of cement in the case of the well. So I estimate seven days of, of time. And then we will meet with the rig and, um, either have an agreement that the rig will stay there pending the drilling of the next well, which is thirty feet from present location for the second hole. Uh, or they will demobilize and move that, that rig out. Being, uh, where we are with COVID nineteen and the whole industry shut down, this is the only well being drilled, uh, in Nevada. So it's unlikely they'll be moving the rig, they're probably will leave the rig there while we continue to, um, correct those roads.
Yeah, and I think, I'm good with everything, uh, my concern is just that, uh, you know, for now, until we have insurance on the water wells and that gets permitted, that really need to stay off of white line five, uh, the field tax, the, our field tax road.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's, that's, I think, really critical at this point. Uh, I think we need to have Bill or Martin go out and check that once a week, uh, cause if that one gets, we're looking at some bad stuff, if that one gets bad, you know, uh, worse. But as long as we can just kinda have an agreement to stay off that one as much as possible, um, you know, um, like we had, I think we had a great conversation yesterday, um, fine, just as, you know, as long as you just run everything with Mike and Brian and DEA's office and say, constant communication and we know where all three parties are, BLM, us, and you guys at all times, water wells, getting the water wells and the gravel permitted, I think as long as we work with the team and just keep going forward, if someone screws up, it's just handed, we can fix that, you know, that, that's fine with me, so that's kinda where I'm at. I'm good with going ahead of what we discussed every day.
That's what I was looking for, is what roads to stay off of and what roads could then be used.
Well, it sounds like after a week or so from now, once they get up and running again, the only people coming across that road should be road maintenance, you know, crews trying to fix the road. There shouldn't be very many crews out of the mine from the drill site.
Yeah, well, we'll only have a facing, uh, truck, which is quite heavy, and a cement truck, which is also very heavy, uh, that goes down, that goes through the major components and actually, and, um, leaving some of the, um, the balance of any trucks going in. We got a water truck that comes in and we have loads, of course, and we have a sewage truck that literally, uh, black water, uh, with the rig.
You know, I quite frankly, the, the company who said that the last two meetings that they could fix the road and get this up to snub, won't sign the agreement. And I don't care what the details are on that, that's, that's not, that's not my side of the business. My side of the business is the county road. And I can comfortably continue to, to support this until we see that signed agreement. I mean, we were promised at the last meeting by two different gentlemen that this road could be brought up to snub, that they could bring us an agreement, that they could get this thing handled, and we've got an agreement that they won't sign. Uh, you know, I, I'm all for economic development, I support economic development a hundred and ten percent, but I've also seen a lot of companies come through, promise to drop El Dorado's riches in my lap, and when they walk away, we're stuck with a thirty-year mess, and I can't be a party to that.
Is there, um, some, some possibility, Mike, that we can, uh, work this agreement out that, um, whoever is agreeing to this, so Western Gold, Western Oil, they're making a, a commitment that whether or not their current contractor that's handling the road comes through or not, they will get, whichever contractor they need to get involved to restore the road and make sure that it's better than it was.
Yes, of course.
To me, that eliminates, cause it, these guys can sign the agreement or not, if they don't wanna play ball, whatever. But the people, the people that have a vested interest in this property and want to see it succeed are willing to commit that, hey, if our contractors don't wanna play ball, fine, you're fired, go get somebody who will fix it.
Well, you know, that's, as far as I'm concerned, Enjex won't touch this road again if they're not gonna sign their agreement. Because it's, uh, it's that simple. They've been here pretty much representing Western Oil, you know? Those guys, they had a lot of, have a lot of confidence in, in the company, your company, and, and they wanna see this project through cause they're investors in it and it's their big, it's big for them, I'm sure this is their biggest project.
Sure.
But they can't expect to touch a blade on our right-of-way. Or BLM's soil without also understanding that there are some liabilities and some contractual obligations. So, that's something to think about. I know they need this permit today, we don't wanna hold them up, but if that's the, if, they don't have to sign it, but then they have to know that they, they're trespass from the road.
But they're still a stakeholder on the other side.
They are, they are.
And that, that's what gives me pause, is you've got a, a stakeholder who wants to be on both, both sides of this and all of a sudden wants to drop one side, but still be on the, on the, on the, the profit-bearing side, the hopeful profit-bearing side of this business. I just, I don't know, I just don't like the smell of it.
Well, I, I don't know, where we're at now, if we shut them down today, you know, we're, we're stuck with, um, you know, if, 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 taking, you know, taking James's word, if, if we can get the wells permitted and they pay for the couple of water wells and stuff out there and then leave us, at least we're a lot better off than shutting them down and having them leave right now. Cause they can't, I mean, white line five can get worse, yes, but they shouldn't be using that. Eleven seventy-seven can't really get any worse, I mean, it's, it's destroyed. Um, so it does, we're not, we're not, we're not saving anything at this point, it's annihilated.
Yeah, and, uh, we have another meeting, uh, one week from today. I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Travis and him, we've gone this far down the road, to shut them down today, it would be cra, I, I, I think that'd be not, wouldn't be the right thing to do, because you have to allow them to do the work.
And just as we shut them down today, the oil rig will move out, so you'll have another twenty, thirty more trucks coming across there, as it is now. So that's only gonna make, at least where we're at now, the oil rig can not move out as long as we can move through this, they'll probably just stack it out on the pad like James mentioned, till we get it, so.
I'll tell you, I would recommend closing those roads and just saying, you guys, they blew it, you know, it's, underestimate the road situation, it's over. But we have developed a plan to restore the roads and they signed the agreement. So those are already two positive steps, but we didn't have a real plan before for water and gravel. I mean, it's still kinda, still kinda in the air, whether we can put it together, I think we can, but there's gonna be a lot of, they're gonna do a lot of work on that probably today even, while they're, even getting respect by the BLM, they're supposed to get those apps together.
And in the meantime, I would like to, um, be informed on how the bonding is coming.
Yeah, we probably should do an, an update next week and get Enjex in here and, because, Jane's unfortunate, you guys are like, it's, no matter how much work we try to do to make this all come together, I mean, I can tell you this board is this close. And we've always been this close, and we just keep limping along week after week trying to see some progress towards a solution. I think we're closest to the solution right now, but, um, we can throw that on for next week and invite Enjex to come and explain to us why they think they're not liable to us.
So you're suggesting that we stay status quo, and look at this and, and everything should be done, I would, well, I would, I'd recommend everything be done and signed and in place by our meeting next Tuesday, or Wednesday.
No, I'm gonna give you their agreement to have you, ask you to sign it and put it on for ratification and sessions.
That's, that's fine also, but, uh, we, we proceed as, as we're going right now, along with what Travis and Mike are suggesting. And that, uh, we'll look at this on the next meeting, we're dead serious, we're not, Mike is, that's our county's thing. Let's take a look at this, let's sign it, and then we'll ratify it at the next meeting. If we're not happy with that, we'll come back and shut the road down.
Yeah, because normally, you know, Bill signs these road agreements, I believe, but this one, because of the, the history of this project already, it's the board to be here in front of the board so that we can get the different opinions on what part of this we don't like. It would behoove Western Oil to talk to their partner Enjex and get a signature on this agreement too before next meeting, probably.
Maybe Jane, maybe if we took a ten-minute break, could you maybe call Enjex and just see if they could kinda rethink what they're, I mean, I think if, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to, cause, I mean, I don't, I don't know if, if they can't get, you know, that signed, it's, it's just, we're trying to get trust built up here and it seems like when we get the pieces together with you and you've been very straight with us, but then when we have these other offshoots and just, you know.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, uh, to take a break and, and contact Enjex. And again, you know, they said they're willing to do what other their investment are, which is what investment the project. And they were objecting, saying, you know, why us as the contractor versus your other contractors? And that's really where the, the issue was. I, I think they're willing to agree, but under their, their investment.
And do you have an indemnification clause with them currently?
I, I don't have any indemnification clause, uh, I'm willing to, to sign indemnification clauses.
Alright, may, maybe call them and tell them, and tell them that, uh, that between you two parties, you have that clause signed. If that is done, they would, you know, sign this as their contracting arm.
And the difference between them and other contractors are, other contractors are working on their pad or just traveling across the road, this contractor specifically is running the blade.
Yeah.
You know, running the dozer, running the lift trucks, and they'll be ones bringing the gravel in, the water, and so we, we have, they're the ones that are gonna be working closely with Bill's office. And so, ne, as a necessary part, it's not necessarily the investment, who put the money in it, but as the boots on the ground, he's doing the work.
Right.
And that's a necessary part of a road agreement with the road department, so we're not trying to take on them.
No, but they have a, they have a company name, that company name is doing the job.
And I think if, if they, you had an indemnification clause, that might ease their concerns, but, um, anyway, that's where we're at right now with all this. If, I don't know if we wanted to take a break and let them talk with them, or if we just move forward and then come back on Wednesday and see where we're at. Give them some time, cause they should probably call their legal counsel, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna be that rushed to do it in just that short period of time myself.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm for not closing, closing the road as is, but I'm just trying to get this where, you know, at least, you know, e, either way, I, I'm fine, I'm just trying to think of ideas just to ease any less, less concern here that we had on our deal yesterday afternoon.
Well, there's a lot of moving parts that have to be done before next Wednesday, and if some of those parts don't fall through, you'll have your options, so.
We like make that a drop dead type deal, like we don't have by next Wednesday, we just close it, can we do that?
I'm not on this agenda, but I think, I think they did.
Have that on our mind.
Yeah.
Well, we're setting the agenda so on to meet with you and we do that and get the items, so.
Sure.
Okay.
So unless there's a, you, you all can take a motion on item one, or you can give a motion to table item one, and a motion to table item two on your agenda. It's up to you.
Do you wanna do the break?
I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea, it looks bad to pressure people, say, we're gonna close your apartment, kind of, if you don't sign this agreement, and that's, I'd like it.
Yeah, especially given.
Give them time to think about it, cause they have obligations on it and duties on that.
A vote call, I, I, yeah, I, I would balk it.
James will need some more time to be persuasive.
Yes.
So if we did the action on this item, and we have call for a motion, don't get a motion, it just dies for lack of motion, so we come back, or is it better to have, ask for a motion to table?
You can ask for it, just, does anybody have a motion, and then if someone could, you know, Commissioner Bobby wants to take a motion to close it, he can, and, or you can just get a motion to table it until next week and see what we come up with.
There, there it is, there.
And no one was more upset than me trying to dig out a truck in a hundred-degree weather, up to my knees in, in frickin' silt. I mean, it's a disaster out there. But I'm also trying to be as creative as possible to solve it for the community.
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion to each, uh, table item one there.
Okay, Ian has made the motion to table item one.
Second.
And Travis has made the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion to table is passed, uh, four to one, Ian, Richard, Travis, and Lori, yes, and Shane, no. So we'll table it by that vote. Okay, and then we'll, right now, I'm moving right on to item two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, page two, item two, discussion for possible action, if you're able to send it there to the BLM explaining Western Gold slash Western Oil, Enjex's failure to maintain roads, to agree that we are, to maintain public roads is a violation of their federal permits conditions, and that we are seeking BLM to revoke their permits for non-compliance and to prevent further environmental reform.
So, uh, as I was saying, this is the other mechanism by which we can halt the project out there, or at least have a, I think, a say in that. And it's by sending correspondence and documentation, like these videos, uh, pointing out the decision record and other non-compliant decision records in a letter to BLM, so they have an official document from the county voicing our objection that it's not being complied with. Like I said, I've read through, I'm ready to break that down and get that sent over, but, uh, again, it's probably, it may be the best incentive for county at this time to wait until Wednesday and see what, what we've accomplished and know. Last time we were in this meeting, we had some agreement, we got, we, we're very close, we had an agreement signed by the major partners. So I think we should wait until next week, probably, and revisit this. BLM knows all about this, but more of a formality anyway.
So would this be a motion table, this item?
That would be, if that, be your decision, you know?
Motion to table?
Second. Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna give a little bit of detail, but that's alright.
You can have your own, please.
Motion to table, sending a letter to BLM.
Okay, and you're Travis, you're good.
Yep.
Motion by Lori and a second by Travis, uh, to table item two, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all of the favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So the vote is, uh, four to one, Ian, Travis, Richard, Lori are yes, uh, Shane is no, motion passes four to one. We'll table this item. The next item on the, today's agenda is, uh, public comment, is there any public comment on what's taken place today? Anyone on the phone, uh, Mike, see one?
Mr. Chairman, it's Gary for you.
Okay, Gary, go ahead.
I just wanna real quick just say that I agree with Shane. You know, we're real careful, cause we're setting the precedent here when you're dealing with other companies and you wanna make sure of his topic before it happens again. And, uh, uh, I think you've given this company a, a number of chances and, uh, just be careful with the, the precedent that you're setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else on the phone, have a public comment?
Hi, this is Jared, Jared Biden.
Okay, Jared, go ahead.
Um, I just want the commission to be aware that, that I rightly grant that road for the purpose that it was required for, and that the commission has some awareness that it is their liability to maintain that road in the condition that they, that White Line County has that grant, and that, um, that risk is on the, the county.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Uh, anybody else? Seeing none on the phone, anybody in the building with a public comment? You can walk up if, please come forward, George, you got a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the company index is not providing full business license here with power. Mr. Chairman, the new parking lot design at Convention Center does not conform to any of the requirements, we brought that up to you one once. They've almost, uh, they're almost at the point where they're gonna accept that. If they do without that walkway in there, to keep, and to get people off the road, that whole board needs to be eliminated, replaced. You've got rules and regulations, you've got to comply with Americans Disability Act, it isn't that you haven't been told. This is a blatant disregard for the law, you need to address that. Mr. Chairman, state health mandates that must be worn, uh, among social distancing when out in public or in public meetings. Commissioner Wallace has attended at least six meetings, public meetings that I've also attended, does not warrant a mask. As a public official, took an oath to enforce law and abide by all laws, he needs to comply or resign, he's no better than the rest of us. He took an oath to enforce the law, you folks took an oath to enforce the law. You can't just look the other way when it involves one of your own. The rest of the commission has the same obligation, do your jobs and resign, that goes for elected officials as well. We lost a dedicated health, public health officer who worked for peanuts, now we're looking at thousands of dollars to replace him. Additional funds that are needed for a new public health officer should be pulled out of, uh, the enforcement departments that fail to do their jobs. COVID is a real thing, if you watch the news, it's only getting worse, it's not getting any better. We can't ignore it, we're lucky we live where we live, we're lucky we don't have the problems others. We're lucky we don't have the problems others do, but we don't need those problems and you need to step up to the plate and make sure that we don't get to that point. Mr. Chairman, you've got RVs all over this community and elsewhere in the county. On May 2nd, 2019, I got a notice and order, or my brother did, in regards to RV, RV vehicles being put on private property. I can't do that, but your building inspector, your half of the building inspector is selectively enforcing the law. I can keep those RVs, those modular homes, off public roads and yet I'm not allowed to. I've got two citations that my people have gotten, the judge dismissed them when the individuals left, but I'm not going to be standing by watching them continue discriminating against me and others. When you have a problem and you're not addressing, you need to step up to the plate. I pay thousands in taxes and I'm not getting anywhere, anywhere but being mad.
Okay, you're single, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments, either on the phone or in the building? None on the phone, and I see none in the building, so that being said, I'll refer a a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Lori and a second by Ian. Any further discussion on today's matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, me, adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, other than this, agenda. Thank you. This is a short meeting, huh, George?
I'll take this.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, if you've heard a discussion on, yeah, if you're not, I think that's, I'm glad to have some.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.